Welcome to 101. I'm Greg Bassett, your host from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper. It's a big day here at PAC 14. We've got a Wycomico Council member in the house, Josh Hastings. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
So you represent District 4, which is the classic middle of Salisbury kind of district.
It's actually this district. This is the home district. I feel like I should get special.
Right. You're on your turf here.
Yeah. I feel like music should play when I walk in.
And you're wrapping up your first term on the council.
Yeah.
And it's been so much fun to watch you develop in this job, not to embarrass you.
Sure.
And just what I saw in the meeting last week when they were talking about pay raises and stuff, Josh was the voice of reason on a lot of things.
I think I've shifted to be the voice of reason more often than not, which is, you know, I have, we have a lot of colorful folks on, personality, you know, a lot of good, a lot of good people on the council and, but it's fun to be able to find the middle ground. I think I've done actually a pretty good job with that part, with actually knowing where people are at and like trying to bring us together. So.
Well, all the great TV sitcoms have a center character who's like a normal person and he's, he or she are surrounded by crazy people. And when I watch the council meeting, that's kind of what I think of you sometimes, that you're surrounded by these crazy people.
Am I like the Jerry Seinfeld?
Exactly. Exactly.
That makes sense.
Well, as an example, last meeting, some people wanted to get up and talk about a state issue that has nothing really to do with Wycomico County. And you were like, why are we talking about this? This is not our job, but people, people want an event and they want an event to someone which you respected, but it kept happening. And I just really enjoyed that part of it.
I appreciate that. Yeah. We've gotten everyone talking about, they want to talk about guns and abortion. I'm like, this is just not our thing. I mean, if you want to talk about this thing, that's great. This is not the venue for that. But yeah.
So jumping off of that, what is your thing? What is, what are you guys, what are you guys doing on the county council?
So good, a lot of good things actually on the horizon. Well, hopefully next year we'll actually have a real county executive, not an acting county executive, but we've been working towards, I said it from the moment that I came onto the council, I wanted to actually have a real water and sewer master plan put together and we have pulled that together and actually are now thinking through, how do we make that happen? Because we've got 18,000, between 18 and 21,000 septic systems of different types, but each one of those are, many of them are failing. They're creating big issues. It's actually all around the entire county. So we've got to help address that issue. We want to have real growth, not just in the city of Salisbury or Fruitland, but really throughout the county in a good way that is consistent, smart growth. So we've got to figure out how to do that. We need to really advance the way that the county has been thinking about these kinds of things. So I feel good that we've got a good path forward on that and a lot of other positive things on the horizon.
Yeah. Sewer is essential, but it's headed to a crisis point with some of these, these developments, these neighborhoods.
Yeah. Actually, I bring this up all the time. I was like, actually, you know, Greg Bassett brought it up and he shared an article that was, that was put out in 1976, you know, which is six years before I was born, that basically said, Wycomico County Council is thinking about a water and sewer master plan, you know, like, and then it had the quotes like, if we don't do something about it, the county is not going to be able to grow. Well, I mean, all these years later, this is precisely what has happened. The truth is actually revealed and we need to actually address it now. Now we're at a critical point. We are the largest county on the eastern shore. We are officially, we beat out Cecil County. We have a number one population. So I feel like we really need to act like it and grow in the right way and not like the sprawl days of the eighties and nineties, but really focused growth. And I think we're, we're doing that. We're certainly in the city of Salisbury, but the rest of the county too.
One of the things you see in the council is that the council members don't embrace the city of Salisbury the way we would all like them to. It's sort of a, not a competitive thing.
Oh, it's a competitive thing. Yeah.
Whatever it is.
We literally have, there was literally a lawsuit about that. Ocean City was suing Worcester County. Salisbury jumped on. It was just so stupid.
But you're right. You are the bridge between, because your constituency is in the city certainly. And you're a young guy like Mayor Day. My thing is here with the politics, the people down the Old Ocean City Road don't want to be annexed into the city, but they're going to have to be to get the city sewer.
Yeah. And honestly, the, I mean, that's the one thing that people aren't talking about is that if we really want to grow, the state of Maryland is basically, they have vice grips on us that we are not going to continue to grow. They're not going to allow us to put pollution into the water. If we put in a, like, if you want to put in a new wastewater treatment plant, it's got to have some place to discharge. And the truth is, we are not going to continue to grow any way but on wastewater, on actual sewer. And water is becoming a bigger, public water is a bigger issue too. We need to protect our resource there. But without a doubt, the county is going to shrink. The municipalities are going to grow. And that's, that's something that the county has to be okay with because it's not going, there's no other alternative.
Right. You're not going to be able to go package plants everywhere with the capacity available at the, at the city plant.
Right.
The state's going to make us go into the city plant.
Right. And package plants have been failing across the entire eastern shore, across the state. But I mean, the amount of, the numbers of package plants that, these are smaller ones meant for smaller subdivisions, say, you know, 100 homes or so. But they've been failing and developers put those together. And at the end of the day, the developer goes out of business, they change the LLC. So then who is then stuck paying for it? Well, then the county picks up and suddenly the county taxpayers have, you know, millions of dollars of something they have to pay for that they never expected to. So we're going to be in that same, we can't go down that road.
Right. I just feel like it's going to be up to you to explain this to your, to your colleagues, because I don't think they understand that.
I actually, that was one of the first things I actually did on the county council was actually to send my, my colleagues, not while we were sitting in council, but after that to say, hey, I worked on the step system within Queenence County, the Southern County Island, hooking up septic systems. Here's some ways, there are other avenues to, to do this and to do it well. Here's some things we can consider. So actually, they do listen to me on that part, which is, is good. But yeah.
You showed some leadership last week in a tense moment. There was a debate about how much to pay the county executive. And it's, it's kind of an amusing debate, but it's also a painful debate at the same time to hear these different points of view and to spend so much time on just a few thousand dollars. But I know it sends a message to people. But you tried to offer a compromise.
Offered three compromises. Each were shot down. Councilman Holloway, he wants to see, he wants to see it 100.
He was stuck at 100.
Yeah, 100,000.
It's 85 right now. He, he was advocating 17% for 100.
Yeah. And so.
And the commission has recommended 120.
124.
124.
Yeah. And the sheriff then would be 121.
Right.
Meanwhile, we had, we had no problem giving the sheriff more money to 117. We raised it up too, but.
And really that should have been 111, but that's a whole nother story.
Yeah. But either way, we're, but I think we're gonna, I, I said during the last council meeting, I'm going to address that afterwards. I've been calling the other council members and I'm going to reach a compromise. I mark my word, I'm going to get it above 100,000 because I think, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think I can convince my other fellow councilmen. At least all we need is one more. It has to be five votes on the county council, super majority in order to change the executive salary. But 85,000 is not good enough. And especially we're the, I mean, I'd say we're the number one county on the eastern shore. We need to act like the big dogs that we are.
Right. Now, we have the acting county executive and that was a painful process to, to get to that. But I guess my sense is, and I, you know, I don't know this for sure, but I think I know it for sure. The council doesn't want a county executive. So they're not going to do anything to prop that position up or really give it the respect that it deserves under what the voters wanted in 2006. But I think that you respect the idea that a county executive should exist.
Yeah. And I think we should be growing towards that. Yeah. Maybe we should have held off till we got over 100,000 in population. And that's not what happened. But I think, I think everyone needs to, as soon as we can all get on board and say, let's make sure that the executive branch has the power and authority that it needs and the legislative has the clear power and authority that it should have. I think the sooner that happens, we'll all be in better shape and we can figure out how to grow together and a path forward. But we're not there yet.
What do you see as the role of the county executive? There's some people who say the executives should just ride around in the car and cut ribbons and go to the chamber meetings and rotary. Other people say the county executive really needs to be in there doing hard work.
I'll say this one. I got my master's degree in public policy and in, basically in, in how to be a county executive. That's essentially what I was trained in. And in my classes there with me was, is now current Baltimore County Executive Johnny Olszewski, Johnny O. What we learned in our grad school classes nearly 10 years ago was about how to do things well, participatory budgeting, you know, how to, how, how to actually run the executive branch where you are running it like an organization, like a business. And I think that's where I would like to see things go. Not the ceremonial executive, but an actual executive where you can have a, you know, a good group of folks around you who can help advise. But I think the executive branch really needs to act like it, like it should be setting the agenda, setting the, setting the budget, really looking forward at big projects and then working with the legislative branch to say, hey, this is where I think we should all go. How can you get us, how can we all get there together? We, we don't have that kind of relationship yet. And I think people are still trying to figure out if the, if the county executive is something that we would really want in here. But I think we should get beyond that.
Yeah. And you see how important the position can be in terms of hiring the director of administration and the department heads, because those different personalities really make a difference in how the county ends up. And then the immense impact on the budget, the idea that the county executive puts out the budget and the council can cut it, but they can't add to it.
Right. Yeah. So the strong executive, I think, is the right system for Wycomico County. It's just we're growing into it and I think we're going to get there. It might take some time, but we'll.
It's great on every board commission that you've got a diverse group of people and you're like the environmental guy, the farming guy, the progressive farming guy on the council from growing up in Mardella, living in Salisbury, your, your role with all the different land use organizations.
The rest of the country and the rest of the world is going to have to go through a TMDL, a total maximum daily load, of which we were, because we had the Chesapeake Bay next to us, we have to think about that. And what that means is that's just basically a big cap on nutrients, the amount of nutrients that can go into the, into the bay or into local water body. So we're leading on, on what we do. And our farmers here on, in the, on the eastern shore, especially Wycomico County, we are leading when it comes to putting in, you know, different best management practices that will actually help clean the water, that will make our, make our output even greater, you know, more pollinators, more, you know, actually keeping the soils on, you know, in place. So to me, that's actually a huge thing for me. I mean, I, that's where I've been for, for many years. I remember in 96 and 98, you know, there were my parents talking about the, you know, what does it going to mean to have a, you know, to have to actually put in a nutrient management plan, which maybe folks on this, paying attention may not know what that is, but each farm has to have a nutrient management plan in place. And this is basically to make sure that we are doing our part to make sure the bay is clean. But in doing so and coming up with all of these practices and thinking through it, we've become, I mean, the, literally the entire world looks to the eastern shore for what we have done, the practice that we have put in place. And we don't get nearly enough attention for that. But, but there are conferences being held around the world where they literally focus on what happens in Wycomico County.
Right.
And we, no one ever talks about that.
And the other thing, when you're in the council, there's a lot of these land things where people will give, give the land over to the county or see the development rights. And you see most of the members, they're looking at the map and they have no idea where this property is or why it's going to add to protecting the environment. And you're able to articulate that.
Yeah. And Bill McCain is actually another great one. He's good. He does appraisals with his kind of work. So I think together we've been able to say why this is important and how we're offsetting the, you know, the, any kind of trees were cut down that has to be replaced two to one value, which is another thing in Maryland, which is really great.
So tell me about your day job, what you do for the environment.
Yeah. Actually, I work, so Faber Maryland is a brand new conservation organization. I've, I've spent years working at Lower Shore Land Trust. And then I spent seven years doing policy, kind of work at Eastern Shore Land Conservancy. So then the conservation world is right smack in the middle of agriculture and the environment, you know. I think a lot of folks probably don't know, we've lost, since 1970, we've lost three billion birds in North America alone have just gone. Right? We are in the, we are in the middle, midst of the Anthropocene, the human era where, where we are dominating the planet and we are doing so. And we're killing off a lot of species. So my organization is focused on basically how to help the folks on the ground who are actually doing work, farmers who want to protect their land and protect habitat, these kinds of things, to help them, get them the resources to help, help these land trusts figure out how to be the most effective, because they're working hand in hand with, with, with folks who own the land. So, and then I'm constantly working on a day, my day job in Annapolis is trying to come up with new, new ways to help advance those kind of land conservation, that kind of work. So it's positive.
Yeah. You're an Annapolis guy. You learned a lot in Annapolis.
Yeah. I spent actually a couple of years working in Annapolis. I worked for the Chair of the Education, Health and Environmental Affairs Committee in the State Senate. And that was actually a big, the big reason why I figured out why I wanted to run for office. I was sitting in the committee room and they were talking about septic systems. This was before the 2012 Sustainable Growth Act Preservation Act, which was the septic's law. I think a lot of people know that. Sitting there listening committee back in 2009, 2010, and they start talking about rural areas and things that happen on farms and what a rural, and I was thinking, I said, these people from across the bay have no idea what it is to live in a rural area.
Right.
And I was kind of, I mean, I knew that they thought that way.
And they want to make laws about it.
Oh, yeah. And they were sitting there making laws. And I'm like, I wanted to just like walk up, open the doors, like, hey, guys, let me tell you how it really is here. But my, Joan Carter Conway, who's a well-known Baltimore City Senator, she didn't get reelected eventually, but, but she listened to me. She helped me, she allowed me to put in bills on my own. Actually, 2011, Senate Bill 771.
Okay.
I actually put in a bill on, on youth concussions. So any, now anyone who was in youth sports, they have to get a concussion protocol. I actually, I wrote that bill. It was just kind of cool. She allowed me to put it in. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. As a side note.
One of the things I saw, and you need to help me understand this, you were skeptical on the idea of taking the natural gas line down to UMS. And I guess that's a bigger environmental debate about whether we want to stick our future in natural gas or renewables. But it seemed to me like a good economic development thing for, for 15, 20 years until we get to the next stage. But you were leery about that. So explain to me some of that, I don't really understand it.
Oh, it's a long conversation, but all, the quick parts of it is without a doubt, we should not be investing in horse and buggy technology. And that's what natural gas and, you know, that, this kind of technology is. Every time that we advance, every time, oh, I could, so many things I could say on why it's so bad. Basically, natural gas, of course, is, is largely methane. It is one of the worst polluters for climate change. It is causing us to lose land on the eastern shore. The process of putting all that carbon up into the air, carbon can dissolve well and when it hits water and that creates carbonic acid. Carbonic acid is what is killing off all of the, not just the, any of our, you know, our, well, a lot of the sea life, not just the coral reefs and all that, but, but also the shells for crabs. So if we continue down that road, we are going to completely destroy our seafood industry. So it just doesn't have to be done. I'd rather, you know, if we really want to get into a, you know, into a fight and actually focus on that, you know, that kind of issue, bringing energy, then let's, you know, let's bring the conversation back to the windmills in, you know, in Chrisfield and Somerset County. That got, that got stopped because of Barbara McCoskey and Pax River across the bay.
Right.
Well, meanwhile, you know, this is our eastern shore. If we want to actually do something about it, then we should be generating our own energy and doing it in a way that actually benefits us and doesn't harm us in the future. I mean, I could go on and on for the reasons of why that is generally, you know, any of these non-renewable sources are really actually much worse than people realize. And not just from the environmental toxins that you're constantly breathing in that are, our farmers get blamed for all of the nitrogen that is deposited into the Chesapeake Bay, when the truth is, that's because of petrochemicals.
Right.
And people don't even realize that. But it goes up essentially and you, you burn it or it goes up in the air and comes back down. And who gets the blame? Our farmers. So it, it is without a doubt, they've tried to wrap it in a nice pack and say, hey, it benefits the, you know, natural gas can benefit. It's cleaner in other ways, you know. There's no such thing as a clean version. It's like clean coal. It just does not exist.
Right.
So the more that you really start to realize about it, you realize how terrible it is. Not to mention it's breathing. We, we lose 30,000 people in Maryland alone to breathing, to, to basic, to basic issues when it comes to, you know, not just COPD or other kind of issues, but respiratory issues. We lose about, we lose about 30,000 Marylanders every year. And that is directly attributed to the things that we, you know, we put, the gas we put in our, our tank. So the more that you realize, the more that you read about it, you understand how horrible this actually is. And the more that we put the infrastructure in for something that is not going to be something that we're going to benefit from, we're intentionally putting ourselves in a bad space. So I love the fact that it's maybe less chemicals than, or less, it's, natural gas can be less than, than current petrochemicals, but a lot of where we get, you know, either way, it's a bad deal.
Right. I think we have a similar thing where we go home to the farm and we're surrounded by conservative people who maybe don't understand the world the way we do or don't have the same experiences. And then you have to be an advocate for some of the things that they're against. How, how's that role for you? How do you, how do you do that?
You know, I'm also on the, most folks, me and I know, they might see me as, they might, some people may know me as the city county councilman or something like this. But the truth is, I'm also, you know, I'm a lead Maryland fellow, agricultural fellow. I've gone to South Africa and dealing, you know, trying to understand agriculture and how it interacts in rural economies. I was the chair of the Rural Maryland Council for a couple of years. Been on, I was on the council for nine years. I am very much focused in that kind of a world. For a while there, I started to wonder like, oh, what if someone sees me as too left or too right or whatever. But honestly, I know, I don't really care. When it comes down to it, we are really in rough shape with the way that the planet is moving. And I want to see, I'm also, by the way, the incoming chair of the Del Marva Land and Litter Collaborative. And this is a Del Marva-wide collaborative with the poultry industry and the environmental folks, sitting down at one table and actually discussing how can we make the poultry industry work on Del Marva in a way that is fully sustainable. And so we've created everything from litter, litter matching apps to make sure that the right people who need litter or can use it on their land and not. We've created all sorts of forums, education sites. So that kind of work to me is really important. I don't, I no longer care. I really don't. I don't think I really cared. But I don't care what other folks think when it comes to this. I know that we need to do better. And we, if we want to make sure that agriculture still exists and, and our watermen, that we have the traditional things that we do well on the shore, if we want to make sure that that exists, then we need to find out the right ways to do it. So I am as thick as you can get inside of that world. And I feel very good about that because I know it's the right way to go forward.
And you're a big supporter of the new Mardella School.
Totally.
Which could have been a controversial thing, but hasn't really been that controversial.
No, it's actually great. And the governor has put more money into, I think it's eight and a half million or so allocated towards it. I mean, I'm a Mardella graduate, proud 2000 Mardella grad. And that is a great school, great community. So I want to be able to help see that happens. There, I think that could also be more beneficial than in helping extend water and sewer. And I think that's where we got to start melting, where the county's going with water and sewer projects, where it wants to go. You know, most of Mardella, people know that it's not actually on, it's not fully serviced by wastewater or.
Right.
Or public water. So the more that we can hook up a lot of these septic systems that are failing and then put into a main system where it can't, it's not just on a package plant, sewage plant like, like it is in Mardella, the more that we can actually have everybody hooked up to one system and actually we can grow there. Right now, it's, Mardella can't really grow unless it's on septic systems and well. And it's not, it's not going to be the path forward to the future. So.
Great. I know you have done work with the Tri-County Council, which is our regional local economic development group. Governor was just here on Friday and dropped off $10 million.
That was awesome. Let me, I'm jumping on that. I was, you know, I say, I chaired the Rural Maryland Council. I talked to then, to then candidate Hogan and to be able to say why I think we need the Maryland, Merida, the Maryland Agricultural Education Rural Development Assistance Fund.
Right.
This is something that, and the Rural Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund. I was there in the beginning, you know, it was nine years ago, talking to the governor. Governor Hogan said, by the way, I'm Democrat, he's a Republican. I fully support. He's one of the best, if not the best governor of my lifetime. And why I say that is he intentionally kept his word and got us to $6 million into that program and then, and then increased it now, $9 million. And this is funds that go out to rural serving nonprofits. And then from that, there's been a $500,000 that goes out to the Tri-County Councils. There's five Tri-County Councils in the state. Governor Hogan on Friday made an amazing announcement, you know, $10 million coming to, through this. I mean, that, that is really fantastic.
And I don't think anyone knew it was coming.
No. Oh, I looked up and Greg Paget, who's the executive director, he was sitting up in, he literally almost fell forward, gassed, which is great. But that's going to go, and that's going to be so much helpful in infrastructure, in putting infrastructure and entrepreneurship. You know, that is, this is a really great announcement. It's great that we're flushed with cash to the state right now. Unlike the federal government, we are fully flushed and ready to go. But, but these are actually going to go to some really good projects. So that was really great to hear. And the fact that he chose to do it here in Salisbury, that says something.
I've been trying to get Greg Paget onto the show to talk about Tri-County Council because some people don't even know it exists or what it does, but it's an important entity.
Yeah. And we've been, we were the ones talking about rural broadband. I mean, that's really where the core of the rural broadband conversation has been the last years. And we were there talking about one day, you know, there might be a time when there could be a pandemic in the future and we're going to, you know, or some sort of issue and we're not going to be able to, you know, to, we're going to have to then transition and pivot to get our healthcare through our computers, to get our education through our computers. We were dead on. We were right. I mean, everyone kind of knew it was something like that would happen. We've been talking about it for years. And that was nine years ago that Adi Akher was talking about that. So it's amazing to see the investment that the council, Tri-County Council and all these other organizations have put together into rural broadband. It's, it's positioned us well. We really need to invest more to make sure that all the Mardellas, the Nanocoaks, the, you know, and on the, and the West Iver County, they're all hooked up and, and that our students can be, get the education that they need.
It was interesting recently, politics kind of played a role in rural broadband. County Executive John Posoda was able to pick a vendor for rural broadband, kind of left the council out of it. Are you confident with this plan for rural broadband?
Two and a half years ago, we're talking with Talky, this random company that no one seemed to know of. Everyone's like, they just got, it was honestly, $800 million contract or something like this, $900 million. And they're like a brand new company out of nowhere, based in, in Chestertown. And no one, even Chestertown even knew who they were. So everyone's like, can this one company actually do what they say they're going to do? So that's the only question in my mind, is if they can actually deliver.
They've had some good success in Worcester. I checked on that.
With the exception for the fact that they then upped their, they said, yeah, it's going to cost us this amount.
They raised the price.
And they said, oh, it turns out it's 30,000 more or something like that. You know, that's, that's the real challenge. You get these kind of low bidders often in government scenarios. And they came back and they say, whoa, look at the federal government. Look what they did. I'm going to have to raise the prices. The taxpayers are going to have to pay more. So I don't want us to be in that kind of situation. I want to know what we're getting, what we're buying. And I think Choptank Electra would have been, Choptank, in this case, Choptank Fiber, they would have been really, I think, a good partner because they're a known organization and they're, you know, their members are here. Whereas Talky, you know, it's a corporation.
So are you going to run for reelection?
Yeah. I am, I am filed to, I have now filed to run for county, can I make an announcement?
Sure.
I'm going to make an announcement live here. In 2026, I am running for House of Delegates.
Are you really? Congratulations.
Yep. Four years from now. Is it too early to say that?
It's kind of early to say that. Yeah. Yeah. We'll let you erase it later.
Yeah. I plan on running for House of Delegates in four years. But in the meantime, because I love that kind of state work. Who knows where we're going to be in four years. But in the meantime, I'm happy to serve on the county council. I feel like I've been extraordinarily effective and not just while sitting in the council meetings, but behind the scenes. I feel like I've been very, very helpful and I've enjoyed helping the constituents who have reached out. So I love my job with the county council. It's part-time, but I'm happy to be a part of it. And we've got a couple of folks leaving the council. I feel like I could help carry them.
You're losing three people and you showed more leadership lately. So you're going to be, move up in this importance factor.
You'll be the senior Democrat.
Exactly. That's not always a good thing though.
But, but yeah, I think that could be, I'm happy to serve if I can get, so far no one's filed against me. I have filed and we'll see what comes of that.
How can people get ahold of you if they want to complain or know more about Josh Hastings?
Yeah. Well, all my information is online on the county website, including my cell, comes right to my pocket, or then go to HastingsforWycomico, facebook.com/hastingsforwycomico, joshhastings.com. And that has, that has all my contact info. So I would love for folks to continue to reach out to me. I don't care if you live in my district or not. I want to help. I want to hear what you have to say. I'm glad to do so.
He's Josh Hastings. Watch the county council meetings. He's fun to watch. And it's great service and we really appreciate you being here today, Josh.
Thank you for having me on today.
I'm Greg Bassett from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper, another 101 right here on PAC 14. 101, right here on PAC 14. First Shore Federal is proud to support PAC 14 and 101. We'd encourage every business to support PAC 14 and pick a program and support it. And let's make a difference.